From scratch. From scratch, from scratch, from scratch, all over again. Oh my gosh, my gosh, my gosh, my gosh, it is what it is. Welcome, 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 welcome. We will do this all over again. Only you Simba. So obviously for for those of you who are watching me now. Made a big error. The first time and I think we were like thirty minutes in on the live stream. Now. We basically have to do everything all over again. But it's all good because we're gonna get right into it. So if you're watching this. Live clip, most likely is because you're failing the ASVAB to some capacity. Okay, or you're not doing as well as you would like to do. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna do a live study session with you guys. I think this is like our fourth study session. To kind of help you guys out as it pertains to passing the ASVAB. So. Today we are going to be focusing on arithmetic reasoning. Like we always do. And. We are going to fly through some of these questions because I think it's gonna be a huge benefit to you guys. So welcome. It's fantastic to have you. We are going to. Get started with some of these questions. Now's your time to get your pencil, your paper. Now's your time to get your. Your your brain warmed up with a few of these questions. If you were watching me before on the live study session and. You were following along. I apologize. Alright, I apologize. Woo man, are we ready? Three times eleven. What y'all got? What y'all got? Three times eleven. I just have to laugh to myself, man. I just have to laugh to myself. Lord have mercy. And on top of that, I'm doing the question. And I make an elementary school error, right? Five times twelve, sixty. Matter of fact, that was actually the question that we're on. Five times twelve, right? So if you were watching before, just let's tune back in and we about to pick up where we left off. Alright? So five times five, twenty-five, ten times one, one, twelve times twelve, one forty-four. I always recommend doing this because it puts you in a state of mind to where you can see numbers and associate them with answers naturally. Okay? Five, like for example, when you see five and six automatically like thirty, you know, four times four, sixteen. Alright, so if you're watching this, see if you can keep up with me. See if you can keep up with me. What's what's eight times five? Forty, five times one, is it six? Y'all want me to put six? Five times one, negative is five. Six times two is twelve, two times eight is sixteen. Let's do another twenty of these real quick. Ten times five. Fifty, three times six, what's three times six? Y'all nine, right? I think nine, three times six. Negative, let's see eighteen, seven times seven. Forty-nine, eight times nine. Seventy-two or so, I think. Seven times five, we got thirty-five on this one. We got eighteen on this bad boy, three times six. Eight times four, what y'all got? Twelve? Hmm, maybe, possibly, I guess it could be. Eight times four, thirty-two. Ten times eight, we got eighty on this one. Seven times eleven. Seventy-seven, ten times nine, noventa. Boom, ninety. And I think this is where we started off, three times eleven, I got thirty-three. Some of y'all might put fourteen, but it's all gravy, alright? Y'all feeling warmed up? We feeling like we could pick back up where we left off in the li- in the last study session? Almost got me on that one. Five times five, twenty-five. One-ten. Nine ti- nine times four, what y'all got? Thirty-something, what y'all got? And then let's do it. Three more questions. Three times, uh, eight. Twenty-four and six times four, once again, we got twenty-four. Last question, ten times twelve. Just add that zero to the twelve, it'll give you one-twenty, alright? Great job, y'all. Great job, great job. So today we are jumping into arithmetic reasoning, arithmetic reasoning once again, once again, arithmetic reasoning, okay? My opinion is the most important section on the ASVAB. By far, because I think you can get the most points in my opinion in this section. Because it's a combination of two other sections as well. Paragraph comprehension and math knowledge. Alright, so. The first question. Granted, we only got into two questions in the last live session, so I don't feel too bad per se, alright? We only got to question number two, but let's see if we can pick it back up because I know there was people following along before. And I don't want to bore y'all. If you're watching the replay. Here we go, let's jump into it, right? So Mr. Cameron purchased a shirt for twenty dollars. He sold it for twenty-six dollars. By what percentage did he increase the price? Alright, so this is a percentage based question, right? Mr. Cameron sold the shirt originally for twenty dollars. He bumped up the price to twenty-six dollars. I'm sorry, he sold it for twenty-six dollars, yep. And then the question wants to know by what percentage did he increase the original price, alright? Percentage based questions, percentage based questions, alright, so. This is how I explained it last time, okay? Anytime you're dealing with percentages, I just want to let you know that a percentage is anything based out of. One hundred. Anything that is based out of one hundred, alright? So that is written like this. Anything or X out of one, why am I writing so crooked? One hundred, alright? So that's percentage based questions. Always think along the lines of that percentage, okay? Anything out of out of a hundred or. What out of a hundred am I looking for basically, right? So what percentage did he increase the price? So. He sold it for twenty-six dollars. He bought it for twenty. We're gonna find the difference between the two. We know that he made a six dollar profit, okay? So what percentage did he increase the price? Great question. We are gonna take this, we're gonna cross multiply it. We know that he got a six dollar profit. Right? And the original price, how do you know what number to put on the bottom here? Do you put the twenty? Do you put the twenty-six? I'm gonna let you know right now. By reading the question, by what percentage did he increase the price? We go back to the original price of the shirt itself and we know that it is twenty dollars. Boom. Twenty on the bottom. Bam. So this is the setup. Formula that we are going to use to find out what percentage he increased the price after selling it for twenty-six dollars, okay? Everybody tracking so far? Alright, now we are going to cross multiply. So. We're not gonna cross, we're not going to multiply going across. For example, we're not multiplying six by X, okay? We are gonna multiply twenty by X, hence why we're saying cross multiplying. We're gonna multiply. This side by that, and we're gonna multiply this by that, alright? We're gonna write that like this, twenty X. Equals and what's six times one hundred? Well, we know six times one is six. We are going to add the two zeros that were there, six hundred. Boom. Is this looking familiar? Like basic algebra that we took when we were in high school to some degree? Boom, twenty X equals six hundred. Do we remember that what we do to one side, we uh, we must also do to the other side? Is that, am I sounding like a math teacher kinda, right? So we are going to have to divide twenty X by twenty. In order to get X by itself, but we also have to divide that same twenty on this side as well, okay? Now we got X all by itself, X equals, and now we're gonna have to figure out six hundred divided by twenty. I'm a person, I believe in simplicity, so there are times where I would just look at this and see that there is a zero at the end of. The twenty and at the end of the the six hundred. So I would cross both of those zeros out, giving me two divided by sixty. However, for the sake of today, we're just gonna solve it as is, okay? So twenty does not go into six, we know that, right? However, twenty does go into sixty. A total of three times evenly, three times twenty is sixty. No remainders whatsoever. So this extra zero can get brought up right above it, right? Thirty is our answer. So on this side, we know that X equals thirty percent. X equals thirty percent. Let's go to our answer key real quick. We see that we have five, twenty, thirty, and twenty-five, so our answer is lurking in there. Thirty percent. My man made a thirty percent profit. Does that make sense? By what percentage did he increase the price? Thirty percent. Is everybody following me so far? My bad, y'all. I'm playing DJ. I'm over here being math instructor. Software editor, everything all at once, alright? Thirty percent. Do y'all have any questions on this question? So this is gonna be something that you basically see on the ASVAB because they're gonna wanna see, do you understand what a percentage means? Do you understand how to set up an equation and do you understand exactly what you're solving for? Right? So this is actually a great start to today's study session. If y'all need a screenshot this. Do so quickly because I am about to delete it right in three seconds, alright? So we can move on to the next question. Alright. Question numero dos. In the military, so this is as far as we made it last time. Like I said, I don't feel too too bad. Alright, I don't feel too too bad. In the military, one-fourth of an enlisted person's time is spent sleeping and eating. One-twelfth is spent standing at attention. I don't even know how accurate this is, but it might be actually pretty accurate. One-sixth is spent exercising and two-fifths is spent working. The rest of the time is spent at the enlisted person's own discretion. How many hours per day does this discretionary time amount to? What a loaded question. What a loaded question. Let me give you all a quick head start. My man Jonathan R. Thanks for doing this. I'm testing on Monday. Woo, that is exciting right there. Let me tell you. You're more than welcome. It's my pleasure. I hope you knock the test out of the park on Monday. Um. Come back and tell us what you scored. Be careful for little trap. Answers that are in the question, you know, they could try to bait you to to answer questions incorrectly. But you've got this Jonathan, you've got this. The whole Simba Alexander community is is cheering you on, alright? So good luck to you and uh, it's more than, it's my pleasure. So let's see what we got. In the military, one-fourth of an enlisted person's time is spent sleeping and eating. Alright, so let's start with that. Let me go ahead and write that down as we go. One-fourth is spent sleeping and eating, one-fourth. Sleeping and eating, one-twelfth is spent standing at attention. One-twelve, standing at attention, one-sixth is spent, I think they said exercising. And two-fifths. That's where I made my mistake before, forgetting that there was a two up top there. Two-fifths is spent working. The rest of the time is spent at the enlisted person's own discretion. How many hours per day does this discretionary time amount to? So whenever you're solving for fractions, I know we hate fractions. With a passion actually, right? Because it's. It's like so unnecessary, you know, and it's kind of confusing at times. So whenever you're solving for. Fractions, we know that at some point, we're gonna have to add up all of these times that it's talking about. Right? So that way we can find out how much discretionary time. He has left over, okay? So we are going to need a common denominator. Do y'all remember what that is? Y'all remember what a common denominator is? We are going to need to find a common denominator between four, twelve, six, and five. Judging just based, just a quick glance at these numbers, I see that the four, the twelve, and the six all go into twelve. Evenly. However, that two fifths there does not go into twelve at all. So. Twelve most likely is not the best denominator to use, okay? So what can we use as a denominator instead? What can we use as a denominator instead? Twelve, not it. What about thirty? Is thirty gonna go into all of these numbers, y'all? Negative. We got a member of the family, how do you? Fionnie Wright? I hope I said that right. Hi Simba, didn't take my test last Thursday. I'm actually taking it. Uh, this coming Thursday. Appreciate all your videos, man. That's motivating right there, y'all. Y'all getting me hyped to take the ASVAB myself, you know what I'm saying? So just like I said, good luck to you. Make sure that you are calm. Make sure that you eat a good breakfast because the test is going to be a long. Behind test, but you got it. Make sure that you don't get lazy in the math sections, alright? Um, take your sweet time. You got plenty of time to 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 knock the test out. So I wish you the best when you take your ASVAB. Appreciate you commenting. Alright, so looking at these numbers, I'm gonna tell y'all, we need a common denominator, right? One, two, three, four fractions. Sixty is a denominator that goes into all of these things, believe it or not. If you were able to figure this out on your own, then fantastic job. Let's say you weren't able to figure this out on your own, what would be the best method to use? Me, I take the most bizarre number like this twelve and I start thinking, okay, well, this tw- this twelve, does all the numbers go into twelve? What about twenty-four? You know, what about thirty-six? What about forty-eight? What about sixty? Okay, cuz I know obviously the twelve has to fit also. And then when I see sixty, I'm like huh, all of the other numbers also fit into sixty. Right? So that's a way that you can figure out common denominators, okay? Uh, let's see, the question is, how many times does four go into sixty? Right? So let's see, we could do it like this. We could either do sixty divided by four. Sure, why not? Let's do it like this. Four goes into sixty, four goes into six, one time. Right? We got four here, when we subtract, we'll have two. Drop that zero down, four goes into twenty-five times, meaning that four goes into sixty fifteen times evenly. Okay, if you need to do this for each fraction, then by all means, take your time, okay? This is your ASVAB. Do it however you wish, okay? I'm gonna let you know right now that twelve goes into sixty. Five times. I'm gonna let you know that six goes into sixty. Ten times. And here we go, the big error. I thought it was one out of five, it's actually two out of five. So. Five goes into sixty fifth, uh, let me make some giving y'all the right information. Five goes into sixty twelve times, right? However, because we're timing the top by two. Instead of the top being twelve here, it's going to be twenty-four. Does that make sense? Are y'all with me still? So this is gonna be the same equivalent. I didn't change the value of the fractions. All I did was. Write them or express them in a different way, okay? That's it. So now that we have all these. We are going to have to add each of these fractions up to figure out how much time left over does he have basically? So whenever we're adding or subtracting fractions, you need a common denominator. When you have the common denominator, now you can add everything across. But your denominator is going to stay the same, so this is gonna remain sixty. Fifteen plus five is twenty, plus ten, that's thirty, plus twenty-four. Fifty-four. Fifty-four over sixty. So how much remainder time do we have? Fifty-four over sixty, right? All that's saying is that's the time that he uses either sleeping, eating, standing at attention, exercising, or. Working itself, right? So when all that is said and done, how much time is left over? Well, fifty-four out of sixty, there are six remaining pieces of that pie. Right? So six out of sixty, he can use doing whatever he wants, okay? Six out of sixty can be simplified, right? Six goes into sixty, how many times? Right? So we know that this is one out of ten, when we simplify everything down. Is everybody following me still? One-tenth of the time is used for discretionary. Reasons or purposes, okay? So how many hours is that? Because when we look in our answer key, that's written in hours. So how many hours is one-tenth, alright? Well, how many hours is in a day? There are twenty-four hours in a day, right? So we know we are going to have to divide twenty-four by ten. I'm gonna write it on this far side actually. Twenty-four by ten, boom. Ten goes into. Twenty-four, a total of two times. Right? We're gonna get twenty. Boom, drop this four down. I'm sorry, when we subtract, we get four remainder, okay? I'm gonna put a decimal here, put another decimal up top here. Because we need to add a zero over here. That zero is gonna get dropped down. Boom, ten goes into forty, how many times? Four times evenly. Right? With no remainders. Two-point-four. We go back to our answer key and we know that one-tenth amount of time equates to two-point-four hours. Is everybody following me still on that question? How are y'all feeling out there? So this is definitely gonna be some type of question that you see most likely on the ASVAB, okay? Something to do with fractions and you know. Uh, Adam, see if you know how to add, see if you know how to multiply, you know, see if you know what functions to use. Um, then the answer is not gonna be like, for example, how we got one-tenth, that's not an answer. So seeing if you know how to convert that over to hours, things like that. Two-point-four hours. Y'all feeling alright on this still? Two-point-four hours. Alright, I'm not seeing any questions. So let's go ahead and move on to the next question. Let me clear this off the screen. Alright, a designer sells a square yard of carpet for fifteen dollars. The same carpet can be purchased at the carpet outlet store. For twelve fifty, twelve dollars and fifty cents. As a percentage, how much more expensive is the designer's carpet? Fantastic question. How much more expensive is the designer's carpet? So I hope y'all are out there trying to solve this, alright? Let me give you guys like thirty seconds, forty-five seconds to get a little head start. And then we are going to jump on it as a team. It's Mooney. Thank you. Thank you. The pleasure is mine. Thank you for joining today's study session. I hope it's beneficial to you. How much more expensive is the designer's carpet? Are y'all ready to jump into it or how are we feeling? How much more expensive is the designer's carpet? Remember I told you now. The question is asking, as a percentage, how much more expensive is the designer's carpet? If you were here in the beginning, remember I told you that there is a way to express percentage based questions. What is a way to write the expression of a percentage? Right? Isn't it safe to say that a percent, oops, that a percentage is. Anything out of one hundred. Do y'all remember that from the beginning? Anything out of a hundred. So a designer sells. A designer. A designer sells a square yard of carpet for fifteen dollars. The same carpet can be purchased at a carpet outlet store for twelve dollars and fifty cents. Okay. So just like the last question, what is the difference between twelve fifty and fifteen dollars? When you subtract fifteen dollars. And twelve fifty. I know y'all are money-making millionaires out there, so this is easy for you, money, come on. Y'all know off the top of your head, it's a two-dollar fifty cent remainder. Right? Does that look accurate? Two-dollar and fifty cent remainder. Do y'all remember what we did in the last question, how we set that up? We're gonna put two fifty. Up top or AKA two-point-five. And we are going to put our twelve dollars and fifty cents. On the bottom. Or twelve-point-five, right? Because the question is saying, how much more expensive is the designer's carpet? Okay, do y'all remember cross multiplying? We did this not too long ago. I'm hoping that we still know how to set this up. Alright, so we have twelve. Point five, X. Equals, what is a hundred times two-point-five? Well, what you can do is you could take this decimal place and move it two places to the right. Add a little zero up here. Two fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty, okay? You gotta divide both sides. By twelve-point-five. So that way we can get X all by itself. So what is two-hundred-and-fifty divided by twelve-point-five? I know y'all are division champions. Alright, let's see if we can dive into this. Two-hundred-and-fifty divided by. Twelve-point-five. Can y'all, can y'all see me writing over there so far to the right? Yeah, you can still see it. Boom, we still cooking. Two-hundred-and-fifty. Divided by. Twelve-point-five. Well, how many times does twelve-point-five go into twenty-five? Well, twelve by itself times two is twenty-four and point five. Times two, that's another whole number, right? So twelve-point-five goes into twenty-five, a total of. Two times evenly, two times twelve-point-five. Two times twelve point five is twenty-five. No remainder down here, this zero can get sent up here. X equals twenty percento. Let's go to our answer key. Do we have twenty percent in here? The designer's carpet costs twenty percent more than the, boom! Twenty percent. Does that make sense? Are we feeling better with percentage-based questions? Okay, you wanna set it up. Percentage means anything out of one hundred, X over one hundred. And now, on the other side of that problem, you're trying to figure out, okay, well, how do I set up? What is it asking me? So you need to find the difference. Most likely, in this case, we found the difference between fifteen and twelve point five. We know that we got two point five, or two dollars and fifty cents, okay? Boom, we put that, we put that up top. And then, we use twelve point five, because that was the, basically, the, the starting point, or the original price, okay? Before we jumped up to the fifteen, because the question is asking, as a percentage, how much more expensive is the designer's carpet? Does that make sense? Once you have that set up, cross-multiplying on each side, giving you an answer of twenty percent. Something tells me that some of y'all are beginning to understand where I'm coming from. Y'all have any questions on that? Something just tells me that is, is beginning to click. Alright, let's see, see what we got on this one. It takes Steve fifty-six hours to paint his fence. If his three children each work seven hours per day with him, how many days will it take Steve and the children to paint the fence, assuming they all work at the same rate? Huh, interesting question there. Let me see what y'all come up with. I'm trying to get a middle of a, a percentage of fraction. Alright, it's Mooney, so I'm reading your comment here. This one is a recruiter. Listen, if any one of y'all are looking for a recruiter, don't hesitate to shoot me an email. Let me go ahead and type it in the chat, actually. Shoot my email in here. And I will be more than willing to help y'all get up to speed. Put my email in here. I read y'all's comments, and sometimes I see that some of y'all recruiters aren't working with you, or you don't find them hel- helpful, or anything like that. Boom! If ever you're running into a little, uh, you know, you don't find your recruiter to be helpful, go ahead and shoot me an email, and I will recruit you virtually. Telling you, I'm a mast- master tactician, alright? I will go ahead and recruit you, and, um, even help you and work with you to increase your ASVAB score, and things like that, alright? If you're dedicated, okay? So, I know you took the ASVAB, you didn't do too well on the ASVAB, but this is gonna help you understand percentages and fractions and everything like that. So just hang in there, stay motivated, and we gonna get you right, alright, my man? We gonna get you right. Y'all finished working out this, uh, question with, with, uh, Steve? Let's jump into it. It takes Steve fifty-six hours to paint his fence. This is kind of a little trick question, and I'm not really a fan of it, you know? I hate little deceitful behind ASVAB questions, you know what I'm saying? It takes Steve fifty-six hours to paint his fence. If his three children work, each work seven hours per day with him, how many days will it take Steve and the children to paint the fence, assuming they work at the same rate? Alright, so fifty-six hours in total. Let's write that down. Fifty-six hours total. Boom! He also have three children that he puts to work. That's a, that's a good man, Steve's, right? If his three children each work seven hours per day with him, how many days will it take Steve and the children to paint the fence? Alright, so originally, I know, I know for me, right? If I was really rushing through this question, I would actually fall for a trap. And what I mean is this, I would look here and see if his children each work seven hours per day with him, right? And automatically, I will calculate, okay, well, there are three children, each of those children are working seven hours, right? So I would multiply three times seven to equal the man-hours of the children, right? Equals twenty-one. And then, from there, I would try to figure out, how much does twenty-one go into fifty-six, right? So twenty-one times two, we know is forty-two, but then I'd be like, dang, it doesn't go into fifty-six. So I would actually, I'm telling you right now, if I was rushing through this, I would be a victim of falling for the subtle trap that they throw in here, alright? Let's read the final sentence pretty good. How many days will it take Steve and the children to paint the fence? Right? So Steve is actually going to be included with the children, so it's not gonna be three times seven, it's actually gonna be the three children plus Steve, which is four times seven. Right? There's four people, and it says, assuming they all work at the same rate. So they're working at the same rate, seven hours, right? Four times seven, it's twenty-eight. And now, we figure out, how many times does twenty-eight go into fifty-six? Alright? So let's do that down here, twenty-eight, hmm, let's see if we multiplied that bad boy by two. We got two times eight is sixteen. Carry the one, two times two is four, plus one is five. It goes in evenly. So with all of them working, it is going to take oh! Two days. Alright? Let's go to our answer key. We got A up top here, two days. Did everybody get that? Are we all on the same page together? Two days, two days. Let me give y'all some quick inside tips, since you guys are here on the live study session, okay? A lot of things that people do wrong on the ASVAB. One, they rush through it, okay? Especially the math sections, because math is not their friend, okay? They rush through it. Don't rush through the first five, don't rush through any of the tests, okay? But definitely, don't rush through the first five sections, okay? The first five sections being general science, arithmetic reasoning, math knowledge, paragraph comprehension, and word knowledge, okay? Don't rush through any of those five sections, because that is where your total what's called GT score, right? That's where your total points, or your AFQT score, for those who have already taken the ASVAB, comes from. So that's where you know if you scored thirty-one, if you scored a fifty-seven, a twenty-two, it comes from those five, first five sections. Another thing, the test will actually kick you off. If you're not doing too good on those first five sections, the test will actually kick you off early, because it's looking at you, and it's like, well, you know, this one here, taking a test, is definitely not going to make it, right? So the test will actually kick you off, um, which is why I'm saying, don't rush into, don't rush those first five sections, okay? It's that important. You don't want the test to kick you off for any reason, okay? Because you're not even gonna get a chance to do assembling objects, or you know, uh, whatever mechanical knowledge, or whatever the case may be. You're not even gonna get to see those questions. So it's gonna be a waste of your time if you rush through those questions without taking your time on each section. When you see arithmetic reasoning specifically, this is your time to sit up in your chair and give it your all, because you're going to maximize the amount of points that you get in the arithmetic reasoning section, okay? Word knowledge, you either know it or you don't. Math knowledge, to some degree, you either know it or you don't. But even that, you can kinda work through some of the problems. Arithmetic reasoning, this is what we're studying right now, because this is what's gonna help boost y'all's score when you do take the ASVAB. Alright, so that's just a little insider knowledge. Take it from me, I'm an army recruiter, I do this for a living, and I'm trying to set each and every one of you guys up for success. Um, a lot of y'all, after talking to me, you actually, your, your scores, you know, skyrocket, right? Because now you have a better understanding of what the test is asking, what it entails, okay? So, without any further ado, let's jump back into the next question. David's dogs, Cujo and Achilles, got into a bag containing two hundred and fifty dog treats. Together, the dogs ate two hundred of the treats. What percentage of the treats remain? I love it. Why? Because we're dealing with another percentage-based question. We've been doing this all day, y'all, all day. What percentage of the treats remain? Let me let y'all get a little head, head start on this. What percentage of the treats remain? Percentage-based questions. While y'all are doing that, don't mind me, I'm over here, uh, multitasking. What percentage remains? Alright, alright. Alright, let's jump into it. If y'all feel like, um, I'm rushing you, don't worry about it, I'm going to actually post this on YouTube as well, and you can, uh, pause and play as you wish, alright? So whatever questions that you didn't get correctly the first time, don't sweat it. We gonna get you right. You can watch the replay, and, uh, so it's nothing to stress about, alright? Let's see what we got. David's dogs, Cujo and Achilles, got into a bag containing two hundred and fifty dog treats. Alright, that's important information. Together, the dogs ate two hundred of those treats. Do y'all remember what we did in the other seven questions prior to this? Right? We're gonna take the bigger number, two fifty. We're gonna find the difference, two hundred. Two fifty minus two hundred, we have fifty as a remainder. What is a percentage? Y'all should know this. What is a percentage? A percentage is anything out of a one hundred. I've been saying it like a broken record since this video started. Anything out of a hundred, alright? So now, let's look at the question, okay? So how much of this did the dogs eat? You can actually solve this in two ways. You can find out the percentage that they ate, or you can find out the percentage that remains, alright? So what the heck, let's just continue, X out of a hundred, AKA what percentage, right? Now, we are going to put our remainder on the top, right? Fifty, because the question is asking, what, basically, what percentage remains, right? Fifty on that side, what number are we going to put as our denominator? That is the question. What number are we going to put as our denominator? What was the original number that was in the bag in the first place? Two hundred and fifty. Does that make sense? We are going to the original number, two hundred and fifty. Yes, the dogs ate two hundred, however, two hundred and fifty is what remains, okay? Cross-multiplying. Let's see, so we know, as we cross-multiplying, this times that, this times that, two hundred and fifty X. Sorry about that, uh, sloppy handwriting, but work with me. Equals, what's fifty times one hundred? Well, one times five is five. How many zeros do we have? One, two, three zeros between both numbers, so we put our three zeros on this side, giving us five thousand. Now, what we do to one side, we've been doing this all day. Y'all should already be ahead of me at this point. We have to do to the other side. So we're gonna divide both sides here by two hundred and fifty. Some of y'all are looking at these big numbers like, oh my gosh, like, I don't think I would know how to solve for that, but listen, when you, when it comes to mathematics, everything is the same, okay? So, we're gonna put five thousand here, we're gonna put two hundred and fifty here. Again, if you heard me earlier in the video, what I normally do is I cancel out the zero that's at this, the end of this number, and the zero that's at the end of that number, right? Giving us a problem of twenty-five goes into five hundred how many times? That's just something that I do, whenever I see that there's a zero at the end of each number. Instead of me looking at a ginormous number, I just make it simple, okay? Twenty-five goes into fifty, a total of how many times? Two, right? Two times twenty-five is fifty itself. Just like we've been doing, there's no remainders, so this zero here gets bumped up. Twenty. Twenty percent. X equals twenty percent. So let's go to our answer key. What percentage of the treat, the treats remain? The dogs ate majority of it, so you get twenty percent. Am I making sense? Ladies and gentlemen, are y'all still with me? I hope that I'm making sense, okay? We've been dealing with these percentages over and over and over, because I really want y'all. This is more of a focused study session, okay? As you can see, I'm not jumping around from percentages to decimals, to, to exponents, to percent. Everything's the same. It's mostly percentage-based questions. I want y'all to become more so masters of one thing, rather than guessing at a lot of things, okay? So the more you understand how percentages works, is the more you're gonna do better on these type of questions on the ASVAB. Twenty percent. Twenty percent. Let me see if y'all got any questions for me. Twenty percent. Alright. Twenty percent. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and clear this out of here. Boom! Chris is five times as old as Sailor. The sum of their ages is eighteen. How old is Sailor? How old is Sailor? How would y'all solve this question? We know that Chris is five times as old as Sailor. We know that Chris is five times as old as Sailor. We know that the sum of their ages is eighteen. How old is Sailor? This is actually a pretty good question. Where would you even begin? What are important facts in this question? It seems so simple, but things like this gets people all the time. Right? So what do we know? We know that Chris is five times older than Sailor. So how can we write that in mathematical, in a mathematical way? Right? Let me see, we know, oops. My little pen go. Alright. We know that, what did I say? Who is this? Chris? We know that Chris is five times older than Sailor. So is it fair to say that Chris equals Sailor's age times five? Is that fair to say? Chris equals the age of Sailor times five. Right? Because he's five times older than Sailor. Okay, fair. We also know that the sum of their ages, we know that this word sum here means after you add everything up, right? So we know that Chris plus Sailor equals how old? Uh, when you add both of their ages up, it equals eighteen years of age. So then how old is Sailor? Well, what we have to do, we can't really solve anything when we have different variables. For example, we have a C, we have a S. So what we need to do is substitute C or Chris's age for this expression that's written right here. Okay, S times five or five S, right? And we are going to input that into this expression right here, okay? So what I have now is five S, right? That comes from this one. Alright, five S plus another S equals eighteen. Five S plus S. So if I have five S's and I add another S, what do I got? Is it true that I have six S now? Six S equals eighteen. Am I making sense? Now, what we have to do to get S alone is we have to divide by six on this side. Divide by six on that, on that side. Sailor's age is three. Eighteen divided by six is three. So how do we know actually, I see that there's a three in the answer key, but how do we know that this expression is correct? So it says that the sum of their ages is eighteen. So let's see, the sum of their ages is eighteen. So let's input that three into this C plus S equals eighteen. Chris plus three-year-old Sailor equals eighteen. Minus three on both sides. Chris equals fifteen. So is it true then that if Chris is fifteen years old and Sailor is three years old? That when we add the both of these up, we have a sum of eighteen? Is that true? Yes, it checks out. This math here checks out. So we know Chris is fifteen years old. Uh, Sailor is three years old, the sum is eighteen. We also know that fifteen is five times three, right? So just like it says in the beginning, Chris is five times older than Sailor, right? So everything checks out. S equals three is our answer. We go, we'll circle A up top here. Boom. That makes Chris five times older than him, and if you add both of their ages, we get eighteen. Our math checks out. Is that what y'all got on this question? I'm actually curious to know. Oh, snap. So somebody said, are we having technical definite difficulties? Not seeing any written, anything writing on the screen. Huh? Is that happening for everyone else as well? Can y'all see anything that is written on the screen? What about now? We gonna, we gonna work through these, uh, we are gonna work through these tech, technical difficulties together. Can y'all see this pen writing on the screen? Boom, alright, alright. So we are having technical difficulties. Man, that's a bummer. So did y'all see? I hope it hasn't been like this the whole time. Did this just start, now start happening? If we are having difficulties, I apologize. Let's go ahead and, uh, I could see it on my screen. Y'all can't see it on your screen. Dang, I think YouTube is telling us like, hey man, y'all been at it, y'all been working for too long, go ahead and cut it off. Man, oh man, oh man. We were doing so well. We were doing so well. Let me see, I can still see it on mine. I hope y'all can see it on yours. Oh, I'll be cooking. Thank you, Holy Spirit. Thank you, Lord Jesus. Alright, alright, I appreciate you. Look, look at that, man. Fiony, am I saying it right? Fiony? Fiony right, man. Coming in clutch right there. We would've, I would've kept it going without even knowing. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Good looking out on that one. So boom, this is the work basically for the question. Um, if you weren't able to follow me through the thoughts, then I will do a quick recap, okay? Just to make sure I don't lose anybody on this question, alright? So I wrote the expression, C equals S times five, alright? The reason that I did that is because in the question, in the question, it tells us that Chris is five times older than Sailor. Right? It tells us that Chris is five times older than Sailor. So that's where the S times five comes in, or five S. Don't mind me, y'all, I'm over here. Alright. That's where the S times five comes in, alright? The sum of their ages is eighteen, right? So if we add both of these together, it's telling us that we get eighteen. C plus S, AKA Chris plus Sailor's age is eighteen, alright? What we needed to do was substitute, we can't solve anything if we have different variables, okay? Like C and S, we need everything to be one, either all Cs or all S, right? So what I did was I substituted the expression for C, AKA Chris, right? I substituted that into this expression right here. Right? So now I got five S plus another S equals eighteen. Okay, again, this is just a quick recap. Alright, I took this expression over here, this S times five, AKA five S, and I substituted in over here, right, to give us five S plus another S equals eighteen. If I have five S's and I add another S that equals eighteen, so that gave me six S plus eighteen, I'm sorry, six S equals eighteen, divide by six on both sides. It gives us the age of Sailor being three. We double-checked our work on this side over here. Right? Uh, we put the three back into the equation for S, so Chris plus three-year-old Sailor equals eighteen. We subtracted three on both sides to get C by itself. We know that Chris's age is fifteen, and we know that Sailor's age is three. We add them both together, we get eighteen, right? Just like it says, the sum of their ages is eighteen. And also, we know that Chris is five times older than Sailor. So three-year-old Sailor times five gives us fifteen-year-old Chris. Everything checks out. That's how you solve this equation. Alright, so we are now cooking once again. How are y'all feeling on these questions? I know we've been hitting percentages pretty hard today. Are y'all, are y'all feeling like you're actually getting it? Are we grasping what's happening here? Would you guys feel comfortable like either setting up the equation, um, solving for either X, you know, uh, what, where do y'all stand as it pertains to percentage based questions? Are we feeling better than we did before? Because a lot of the ASVAB typically is percentages and fractions type questions. Do you know how to switch fractions into decimals? Do you know how to, you know, decimals into fractions, switch it back to percentages? Things like that, right? That's why we're hitting it so hard today. Alright. Hmm, this doesn't really look percentage-y. But let's give it a shot. I could definitely see something like this also being on the ASVAB as well, alright? So what the heck, we're here, right? So let's see, let's see what we got. A train leaves its station and travels towards Seoul averaging forty kilo, kilo, kilometers per hour. If you live in America like me, we don't deal with kilometers, alright? We deal with miles, alright? So me, I like to understand what I'm reading. You could substitute the word miles for kilometers just to help you out, but it's all the same at the end of the day. The math is still the same. Alright, so one train leaves forty miles per hour or forty kilometers per hour. An hour later, a train on another track leaves from the same station and also travels towards Seoul, the same destination, at an average rate of fifty miles per hour or kilometers per hour. How many hours will it take the second train to overtake the first train? Good question, actually. How many hours? How many hours? This might be, this might be a good question to close it out, close out today's study session on. How many hours? How can we solve said question? So what do we know? Alright, some questions you just have to draw a picture of. So let's say, this is our station, right? Train one leaves and goes forty, uh, what, kilometers per hour, right? So let's just say miles. Train one goes forty miles down the road, okay, per hour, right? So after one hour, we know that train one is forty kilometers down the track, okay? An hour later, train two leaves now and goes fifty fifty, I'm gonna use miles, fifty miles down the road, okay? However, train two doesn't leave from the station until an hour after train one does, right? So train one leaves, an hour later after that, goes another forty miles down the road, train one is now fifty miles down the road, okay? So now, this is two hours. Right? Forty plus forty, we know it was eighty. Right, for train one. Another hour goes by. We're gonna add another forty. Right? I'm just gonna add it up in total. Eighty plus another forty is one twenty. Okay? Meanwhile, train two is at a hundred miles, fifty plus fifty. It's going fifty miles and the other one is going forty miles. Does that make sense? Alright. I'm gonna go ahead and do it again. Another forty for this one gives us a hundred and sixty miles down the road. Another fifty for this one gives us one fifty. Okay, we got two things going on at the same time, okay? Train one that's going in forty mile increments, train two that's going in fifty mile increments. We're gonna go again, another hour down the road, train one just hit two hundred miles and train two has now caught up to train one, also at two hundred miles. Does that make sense? Are y'all visualizing what's going on? You know, one is going forty miles an hour down the road, the other is going fifty miles an hour down the road. But train one had a head start on train two. Okay, so now we know that if we continue this, at this point, train two has passed train one. Alright? So it was in this hour right here that train two passed train one. So how many hours did it take train two to pass? You got one here. Another hour here. Another hour here, another hour here. So it was in the fifth hour that train two passed train one. It was in the fifth hour that train two passed or overtook train one. Does that make sense? If this one is moving at fifty miles every hour and this one is moving at forty miles every hour, it had an hour head start, right? So by the time train one was at fifty, I'm sorry, by the time train two was at fifty, train one was already at eighty. And now it's trying to catch up to train one, gaining ten miles on it at a time. Does that make sense? In the fifth hour, train two passed train one. Because in the fourth hour, they both were at two hundred. I'm trying to explain this in different ways because I know some of y'all out there scratching your brain right now, okay? However, that's what pictures are useful for. I took the ASVAB recently just for the heck of it. And a lot of the questions I was drawing pictures on, so something like this, like, okay, I need to visualize what's happening here in order to know what the question is asking, right? So a question like this, I would draw a picture. B would be the answer. It takes five hours for train two to catch up to train one, okay? D is kind of a, you know, silly answer. You know, the second train will not overtake the first, uh, before it arrives in Seoul. We don't know how long it takes these trains to arrive at Seoul because we don't know what the starting point is, okay? So that's kinda like a little, I don't wanna say trick answer. But those who are trying to solve the problem will most likely circle that if, you know, but those who are trying to solve the problem will most likely circle that if, you know, you didn't come to a solution, okay? So B is the correct answer. I think that is a good place to cut today's study session. Matter of fact, before we do, let's just do a little closeout, you know, brain cooldown, okay? The way we're going to do this is we are going to end the video, just like we did starting the video, and we are going to do some quick multiplication just to make sure that our brains aren't fried, alright? So what do we have here? Two times eight. I hope y'all came up with sixteen. Eleven times nine is ninety-nine. Six times one is six. For those of y'all who are, nine times four, for those of y'all who is still here watching, I just wanna say, great job to you guys. You guys are investing in yourself, right? So you took an hour out of your day to do a study session. And the reason that I'm setting it up the way that I am is just so that way you guys can study on your own time as well, okay? I want y'all to study effectively, not just study for the sake of wasting time studying assembling objects. You know, I speak about this in my videos. So if passing the ASVAB is something that you really wanna do, go ahead and check out my previous videos where I talk about little tips and tricks to pass the ASVAB, alright? Everybody watching has the potential to pass the ASVAB. It's all a matter of you taking the time to invest in yourself, okay? Study effectively. Eight times twelve, I'm over here talking and trying to do multiplication at the same time. So if I get a wrong answer, please forgive me or correct me in the comment section down below. But eight times twelve, what do we have? I think it's ninety-six. I guess it's ninety-six, alright? So a great job for those of you guys who are still here. We're gonna do another eleven of these multiplication questions, and we're gonna shut it down for the day cuz y'all have been fantastic, alright? Eight times five, we got forty, ten more questions left to go. Two times twelve, twenty-four. Six times two, twelve. Twelve times five, we seen that today in an earlier question. Sixty-four times one, four. Two times twelve, twenty-four. Eight times four, thirty-two, I think? Boom! Three times five, we got fifteen. Ten times ten, Mister Benjamin, hundred. Five times twelve seems to be the vibe of today. Sixty-four times ten, we got forty. And lastly, I wanna, this is gonna be ironic. If this was the first multiplication question to start the video, eleven times three, thirty-three. So I just wanna say, thank y'all for joining today. God bless y'all. May the Lord expand your understanding. Our Father, everybody who is joining us today, may you increase them in knowledge and understanding as it pertains to the language of math. May y'all be blessed in all that you do. I just wanna say, always remember that success is made by action. So get up, go grind. I'll see you next time.